We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Do we have anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action to that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn this special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalum Cherla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have any agenda updates?
None to that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will move to business from the floor. And right now, we only have one request to speak, and this is for items that are not on our agenda. You will have three minutes, and just to further explain, we can't actually get into a discussion because the item's not on the agenda. So first, the only request so far would be Andre Casanova.
Good evening, council members. I always like to speak on when you have any of these projects of affordable homes and projects that you're building, that you put some type of language in, that you have some type of a living wage for local hire, some form of apprenticeship, prevailing wage, helping welfare for your local citizens who live here, instead of them having to drive hours, hours to other cities who work on similar projects where they do have prevailing wage or livable wage, where they can't afford to live here. It would be nice if you could put some type of language in so that your local citizens could have a decent job. That's all I could say. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like our next one is Justin Rathel.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'll be back up here in just a second to talk about Service Day, but wanted to start, we had a great project submitted through Community Service Day. That's the re-roof project for Twin Lakes Food Bank. They did have to pull a permit in order to do the re-roofing project. I've been informed by staff that that permit fee is $270 that could be waived, but that action can only be taken by the city council. So I'm just here to request that you guys waive that $270 permit fee if you could, because it's a great nonprofit that serves the community and serves many members of Folsom. If you can't, hey, we've got it built into our budget, totally fine. I was just told it can't be a staff action. It's got to be a council action to waive that. And out of the fees that were paid, 270, I guess, could be theoretically waived if you check with staff.
Thanks, Justin. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, not seeing anybody coming forward. We will move to scheduled presentations, and Councilmember Kozlowski will do the first one. Proclamation of the mayor's city of Folsom proclaiming September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Folsom.
All right, if Charlotte Parkhurst and Kim Richwine can join me and whoever else may be with you, here's the proclamation, so I'm going to let you guys hold that. Charlotte here is the...
Charlotte Parkhurst is our chapter.
I'm Becky Shoka.
Hello, Becky. You were here last year, right?
I was.
I got to do this before. I'm excited about this. Okay, so anyway, Charlotte is the chapter, the vice regent. That's the name of it.
Right, and our vice regent is Kim Richwine.
Maybe.
That means just...
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kim Richwine. Nice to meet you.
That's nice.
For the Charlotte Parkhurst chapter of the D A R.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, let me read the part that they gave me as a script. How about that? All right. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming September 17th through 23rd, 2022 as Constitution Week in the city of Folsom. Whereas, on September 17th, 1787, after four months of debate highlighted by sharp differences of view and by wise compromises, the outstanding leaders of our republic, who were meeting in convention at Philadelphia, signed the Constitution of the United States of America. And, "The story of the framing, signing, and adoption of that document constitutes one of the most significant chapters in the history of our country, and it is fitting that every American should reflect upon the vision and fortitude of our forbearers in creating a charter designed to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare," I'm trying to not sing it, "and secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and for the fortunate millions who were to follow them as citizens of this nation. And for 235 years, America's constitution has guided our growth and defined us as a nation of sacred laws and fundamental values. And, Congress has requested the president to set aside the week beginning September 17th of each year as Constitution Week, as a time for the contemplation and commemoration of the historic acts which resulted in the formation of our constitution. Now therefore, I, Mike Kozlowski, on behalf of Carrie Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, and on behalf of our full Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2022 as Constitution Week in the city of Folsom. During this week, we celebrate our constitution and the right of citizenship that together we enjoy as the people of this proud nation, thus proclaimed this 13th day of September, 2022." And I will give the mic over to Kim Richwine, who is chapter president. Or Becky.
She's the constitution.
My apologies. Becky, you did make it onto my list.
I know, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just the chairman of the Constitution Week Committee. I'd invite all of you to come Saturday at 1:00 PM, right here in front of this city hall. They're actually going to ring the bells in the tower, and I don't know if they're recorded or what, but we're going to be here with little signs and our own little handbells to just show a little celebration for our country. So, come and join us.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very, very welcome.
And if Ruth Anderson would meet me down front for ovarian cancer awareness month? And unlike the previous one, I assume you actually are Ruth Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of September, 2022, as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Folsom. Excuse me, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer death in women in the United States, and whereas ovarian cancer is called the silent disease because its symptoms are often vague or subtle, and whereas according to the National Cancer Institute, ovarian cancer may not cause early signs or symptoms, and it's critical for screening for the disease, and whereas ovarian cancer often goes undetected until advanced stages, increasing awareness of risk factors is critical to fighting this disease. And whereas the good health and well-being of women is enhanced by increased awareness about ovarian cancer, its symptoms and treatments, and whereas it is critical for women and healthcare providers to recognize the risk factors and symptoms of ovarian and gynecologic cancers, and to remember the importance of early detection and preventing intruding these diseases, and whereas the city of Folsom joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance of early detection, testing, and treatment for ovarian cancer. Now therefore, I, Carrie Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2022, as ovarian cancer awareness month, and the city of Folsom to increase awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment of this disease, proclaiming this 13th day of September, 2022.
Thank you. Say a few.
Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Ruth Anderson, and I live here in Folsom. One in 78 of us women will get ovarian cancer in our lifetime. One in 78. And 50% of us that have ovarian cancer will die within five years. That is just startling. And yet, so little treatment is available unless it's really caught early. So I'm encouraging all of you to Google this, go online, go to Ovarian Cancer Alliance Research, OCRA, and look at what the symptoms are, and share this with your wife, your mother, yourself, your daughters. And we encourage you also to donate. We need more research. Those of us that have lived a longer life realize that breast cancer was a killer at some point, not that long ago, and now so many people have hope and lives because of research in this area and treatment. And we're praying and hoping and working hard for the same results for ovarian cancer. So please look at the symptoms on Ovarian Cancer Research Alliance on your website. And thank you so much, city of Folsom, to designate this and to take precious time from your meeting to share this important information with the community.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to the presentation of Community Service Day for 2022.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Lorraine Pejoni, your Parks and Rec Director. I'll start off tonight, and you'll have a little more presentation in a few minutes. So Community Service Day is four days away. We've been working on this since our first internal kickoff meeting on January 19th. That is 241 days of planning and strategizing to deliver one of the most amazing community projects in our community. For me, it's kind of like planning a wedding, except it was a little cheaper. This couldn't have been done without our unfettered support of our 28-person steering committee who made, who met with us 12 times over the course of this planning. To make this magical event a reality, we had incredible support from our community leaders, such as Justin Rathel, our chair, many other amazing leaders, who are spearheading numerous efforts, such as our seven different donation drives, Neighbors Helping Seniors, and we now have 96 community projects that we'll be accomplishing on Community Service Day this Saturday. This effort couldn't be done without the rock star, the rock stars of our internal staff that covered 11 different areas of responsibility, ranging from marketing, website, and social media, budget, project planning, sponsorships, donations, and numerous logistics. I'd like to thank Tom Hellman and Derek Perez for agreeing to be co-leads with me. I didn't want to do this by myself. Along with Brian Wallace for his creative talents in our shirt design, which you'll, hopefully you've already received your shirts, but you'll see a little more of those tonight, for his creative talents, Brad Franklin for his team in opening up his doors once again at Lakeside Forest, Mark Behuth, who graciously is leading a Mammoth Food Drive event, Mayor Howell for her leadership and partnership and participation in the event, and council member Chalum Cherla for his support as well during this event. I'd also like to thank Christine Brainard, Chris Shepherd, and Raina Basa, who were there for us along the way. This was Parks and Rec's first year at running the event, and I certainly saw the hidden and the giant, the giants they were in making this event happen in these prior years. Lastly, I'd like to thank our returning and our new sponsors who really make this event possible. The weather is looking great for this Saturday. Thank goodness, a lot cooler. Our, all of the details...
Hopefully not as cold as it was last year.
Right, right. Somewhere, somewhere in between the super hot and the cool. Yeah, we did get a little rain last year. But our details are dialed in, and we're ready for yet another big day of really making a difference in our community. I really want to thank each of you two for all your time. You've individually invested time and energy into this, and we really do hope to see you there on Saturday. We have a great event planned, and look forward to seeing you at Lakeside in the morning, and then whatever project you might be on for that day. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tom Hellman, and he'll walk you through a quick little kickstart of our Community Service Day in a few days. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Tom Hellman, your Parks and Recreation manager. Community Service Day is four days away, and it's very exciting. It's not my first event, as far as managing an event, coming from a background in Parks and Recreation, where we do a lot of event management, but this is a very special event for this community, and I'm very honored to be a part of it. You should have all received your shirt. I see Councilmember Chalum Cherla wearing his tonight. If you have not, please do let me know, because we do want to see you in your lovely maroon on Saturday. The design that you see before you was once again crafted by Brian Wallace. Again, this community, this event is really about service, and so you see on the center of this shirt, "We Serve Folsom," with the hashtag of #ServeFolsom as the main components of really Community Service Day, right? We're out there to beautify our community. We're getting a lot of people to show up on Saturday, and I'll tell you those details in just a second, to help with the many different products that are going on. Lorraine talked about this, but we really couldn't be where we are without the champion of Christine Brainard, her staff there, Chris Shepherd the last few years, and especially Raina Basa as well. I think I saw her in the back, yes. Christine's in the back there being shy. But one thing I always contribute to Christine in this event is this service with a smile. I don't think there's ever been an event where I haven't seen Christine out there smiling while she's providing some level of engagement to the community. So really do appreciate that of you, Christine, and thank you for all your leadership and help as we transition for this year. So what's happening on Saturday? Well, as of 4:55 today, these are numbers that I have to share with you, but they're going to continue to grow, I'm sure. So as of right now, we're well over the 2,000 volunteer mark, both registered volunteers that have taken the time to be prepared to come Saturday, as well as our steering committee and very others, members of the community that are part of that and are part of Community Service Day. What that means is, as of right now, we're 99% full of all of our volunteer-registered spots, which is great, but fear not, even if you do show up Saturday and you did not register, we do have some spaces available, so we can send you out on different project sites, and our staff and team will be there to help you with that, to get you out to different spaces. So again, this is Folsom's largest day of volunteerism. It's a beautiful day where you see so many people coming together to do so many different things, and at the end of the day feel accomplished for the service that they give. As Lorraine mentioned, we have well over 96 projects. These are just a sampling of some of the projects that people will be out in. As you can see, and Justin briefly talked about, we have a re-roofing project at Twin Lakes Food Bank. We've got something going on at the B T Collins Disc Golf Course, as far as some shading, some golf course infrastructure cleanup. Got a lot of trail work, either trail cleanup and/or Hinkle Creek Trail Work as well, some sportsfield renovations that's going on. We've got the Natoma Station Pond Platform that's being replaced, which is a very cool project out there. And we also have some other beautifications in our open spaces and near our buildings and stuff like that that are going on as well. So a good sampling of different projects that a good majority of those volunteers will be at. In addition, we have a wonderful kind of companion project program to Community Service Day, and that's our Neighbors Helping Seniors projects. This year, we have over 50, we have 59 individual residents that will be receiving some level of projects done at their house, and that could range from cleaning a gutter, trimming a tree, planting or removing some brush or material that's around their house, fixing smaller projects within the home and outside the home. So to really provide it a great service. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Greg Kiefer's name, who's been involved with Community Service Day for a very many long, a couple of years now, and doing an awesome job of finalizing and helping extra folks that have been calling in even to the last minute, probably is helping them today right now, adding them to the list to make sure we can get them a project. As Lorraine also mentioned, Mark Behuth has been the champion of our citywide food drive. If every resident were to take the time just to fill that bag or fill a bag and leave it out Saturday morning before 8:00 AM, we'd be able to help feed the Folsoms hungry for one year. So think about that, and just if you could, look to donate on that day, leave it out on your doorstep, and we'll have volunteers combing the city to pick that up and bring it back to the Twin Lakes Food Bank for them to have. In addition, we also have seven other donation drives going on, from bringing in a bicycle for children or adults, to use glasses, to yarn and fabric, Legos, shelter pet supplies, and purses. And then just next door here at the Folsom Community Center, from 10:30 to 4:00, we will be having the community blood drive by Vitalant. If you are interested in doing or providing blood or giving blood, they recommend an appointment. You can do so by the QR code and or going to vitalant.com, and there's an access code that you can submit to get your appointment taken care of. I do not recommend doing labor that day, then going to give blood, so just do one or the other, please. This is just a sampling of some of the things that you'll see, some of the project work that you'll see. On the top left there are the folks from Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints preparing the bags that were delivered for the food drive. Mark Behuth in the background doing the great supervision that he does. And then over on to the right, a worker from last year looking to help out a Neighbors Helping Seniors project, cleaning up a window there. And then that's our donation drive circle there at Lakeside Church, where folks will be able to drive through, drop off those donated items that I just went through with you. Sponsorships and the community support of all of our businesses has been great. Intel has been our presenting sponsor for nine years straight. They are back again, and very excited to be a part of this. I have no doubt that they'll also be sending some volunteers out to the different projects as well. So a big thank you to Intel for their continued contributions and support of this event. We brought on a number of different new sponsors this year, which we're very proud of, and some of our platinum and gold sponsors here. You might see some familiar ones from the past, but we do have some new ones in here as well. Folsom Telegraph, Sal Magazine, great media partners, and thank you for that. Lennar Holmes came on board this year. We have Lakeside Church of Jesus Christ, the Rotary Club, and Goodfellow Brothers as a new sponsor this year as well. And then some of our rounding out our silver and bronze sponsors. Again, just the quantity and the sheer support of so many businesses and individuals that really helped make this event what it is, has been astronomically impressive. So this year, our sponsorship program brought in a total of over $101,000 in both cash and in-kind contributions. So a phenomenal dollar amount of providing to make sure that we can take care of these projects, help the Neighbors Helping Seniors tackle those 36 individual projects and fund them, and then to provide to make sure that we have a great event day there at Lakeside Church and around the community that entire day. This time, I'd like to ask our chair, Justin Rathel, to join me up here, as he gives you a quick little overview of who's on our committee and closing out in preparation for Saturday.
Thanks, Tom. I just want to thank Tom, and Derek, and Lorraine. Parks and Rec has been great. It's been a transition year, so of course, we had some bumps along the way, but they've handled them amazingly well, and I'm really appreciative of all the work they've put in. I've been a lot of hours this year in bringing Service Day forward again for 2023. So I'm going to ask the steering committee members that are here to actually come up and join me in their maroon shirts, or come down, either way.
Uh, Mayor Howell, I'm going to excuse from my council call.
I just want to know who put this slide together?
Who put this slide together?
Yeah.
Oh, because your name's spelled wrong?
Yes.
It was not me.
My apologies. Guess I'm going to have to get those pink signs up faster.
Well, I really, I can't believe it's been nine years since we've been doing Community Service Day. I definitely don't feel nine years older, but here I am in front of you, nine years later. It's grown. It's amazing, the spirit of community that exists here in Folsom. I knew it then, but I definitely know it now after doing this for nine years. It is so nice to have a council that is engaged, and I'm proud to say that I've seen every one of you out there donating your unique skill sets and your money and time to these efforts. So I really appreciate the council's support that Community Service Day has had over the years. With that, I would say that Service Day is also about growing leaders that want to give back to the community, and those folks that are standing behind me right now, and those folks that are listed on the screen, are some of those leaders that they don't just give back on Service Day, they don't just give back by showing up to the steering committee and giving their advice and giving their efforts forward, but they give back pretty much year-round in serving your community. So we've got Dr. Anthony Rototo, Brian Wallace, Brad Franklin, Ted Ocampo, Y K Chalum Cherla, Jennifer Thiat, Sandy Economy, and Ronnie Lynn. So give a big round of applause to those folks that are here. And Brian's name's been mentioned a lot. Can you run these up there? He's got some great stickers that are going in the Service Day bags this year. You guys will probably get another one in your bag, but wanted you to see them, because his artwork's great and brings so much joy to our volunteers. We get, we get questions all the time about what color the shirts are going to be, what the artwork's going to look like. And so people really, I think, kind of show up for the shirts at this point. So thanks, Brian, for giving one more reason for people to give back of their time and their talents.
I think it's adorable, Brian, that this gun gets standing next to the flowers. Was it you that posted the picture of the rabbit, that the rabbits were upset because they weren't represented?
A lot of animals got left out.
So he keeps, he keeps raising the bar every year. We're wondering what 2023 is going to look like. So thank you, guys, so much for your support of Community Service Day. We look forward to setting new records next year, and we look forward to serving Folsom on Saturday.
Thank you, guys, for everything that you've done to get this thing organized. That moves us on to the consent calendar. Do we have anybody that would like to pull anything?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second and a third. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Cherla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. That moves us to item 12, Old Business.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12 is Resolution Number 10911, a resolution of the city council, the city of Folsom proclaiming termination of the COVID-19 local emergency. And this is a follow-up from your April, August 23rd meeting, where you, I sought direction from you as to whether you were interested in terminating our state of local emergency, and you indeed were. So we're back with the formal item. Just as a quick review, the state of local emergency in Folsom was adopted by the city council in March, on March 16th, 2020. The governor had declared a state public health emergency on March 4th, 2020, and the Sacramento County Public Health Officer had declared a public health emergency on March 5th, 2020. At that time, there were many unknowns, lots of confusion, and we were honestly trying to fly a plane while building it. So very different world then. Next slide, thank you. So again, at your August 23rd meeting, you directed staff to bring back an action item to terminate the local emergencies. That's why I'm bringing this item tonight. Next slide. I wanted to walk through kind of some implications of terminating the state of local emergency. First, as I went through with you last time, terminating the state of local emergency means that we're also terminating, or you're also terminating, all seven emergency orders that I issued as the city's director of emergency services, your city manager, during that time period. So you'll recall at the last meeting, I went through all seven of those. And another implication of the termination is that parklets were a silver lining that emerged frankly from that terrible time of the pandemic, and those were allowed and established by an emergency order that I executed, and the council provided direction at your last meeting that you'd like to see those continue on public property even if the local emergency were terminated. So tonight, item 13 on your agenda, which is the one after this one, is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 12.25, temporary outdoor dining permit, to the Folsom Municipal Code to enable that to happen. And then you also directed that you were interested in, you know, during the pandemic, one of the emergency orders included the allowance of, people could have as many garage sales as they wish. We felt like we didn't want to be onerous on garage sales during the pandemic, and you also gave me the direction that there was really no reason to restrict those. We haven't received any complaints in the last two years since that emergency order was executed. So an item will come before you at your next council meeting for an introduction and first reading of an ordinance. reading of an ordinance removing the limitations on frequency of garage sales. I wanted to point out, actually, at this time, I'd like to bring up Allison Garcia, who is our Human Resources Manager. There are some implications in terms of the COVID leave that we offer to our employees in, again, in terminating these emergency orders, and I just wanted her to go through that briefly.
Good evening, Allison Garcia, Human Resources Manager. So council previously directed the termination of the local emergency to coincide with the expiration of the California COVID-19 Supplemental Paid Sick Leave set to expire on September 30. As you recall, the COVID-19 Local Emergency established the emergency leave benefit for employees. This resolution terminates the COVID-19 Local Emergency, thereby sunsetting employee COVID leave benefits effective October 1. However, since the last council meeting, an assembly bill was brought to the governor's desk proposing to extend the sick leave program from September 30 through December 31. The bill does not require employers to provide new or additional sick leave to employees who have already used their 2022 COVID sick pay allotment. If we expire the city's local emergency and consequently the employee emergency leave benefits, employees who have not used a full 80 hours of this year would be allowed to use a state sick leave if it is extended.
Thank you, Allison. So there's a decision point here. If it is still your direction to terminate the local emergency effective October 1, do you want to continue to allow city employees to draw upon their existing city COVID-19 leave banks to a future date aligned with the state legislation if the state does indeed extend it? That's a question for you. And what that, so right now, Allison, maybe you could explain that our employees have 512 hours and that they've had for the last, what, couple of years at this point?
Right. So non-safety employees were allotted 512 hours April 1 of 2020.
And some employees have made their way through all of that leave either because they were ill or a family member was ill or, you know, a child wasn't in school. Others haven't touched it. Others are somewhere in between. And so the question is, do you want to let that leave bank stay if employees still have hours and let them continue to draw upon that until and if this state legislation terminates the statewide leave? Or do you want to just sever all on September 30?
So just for clarity, a bill was introduced or a bill passed?
It has not passed yet. It's on the governor's desk. So it's really, we're just anticipating that there could be a change to this September 30 date. And I know Councilmember Kozlowski, you had specifically said, be nice if everything lined up with that. And of course, just right at the last minute, the date started maybe slipping, so I just thought I'd mention it tonight. Anyone have any strong opinions on that one or the other?
Anybody have any opinions about the 30th versus keeping aligned with the state legislation?
The state legislation proposed December 31 of this year.
Correct.
Okay.
And to be clear, even if you said, no, we want the city to, you know, to tell employees they can't use their city leave bank anymore, they, no matter what, will get the state leave because that's law. You know, we have to allow our employees to have that. And that's 80 hours? Is 40 hours for yourself and 40 hours for a loved one?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So they would still have time.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, if they still get 80 hours between now and the end of the year, I'm happy to terminate it October 1.
And then if the state does extend it, we just obviously follow state law and implement that?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez. Thank you, Mayor Howell. Anybody else have a feeling on this?
Can you repeat one more time what you said?
The city's leave bank would end on October 1, and if the state extends that date till the end of the year, even if we've eliminated the leave bank that the city has in place, those employees would still be eligible for up to 80 hours from the state.
Okay. Thanks.
So is there?
Do you still agree?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a consensus that as of September 30, city employees, the city employee leave bank will end, and we will just depend on the state leave?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And with that, as your city manager, I respectfully recommend that the city council pass and adopt Resolution Number 10911, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom proclaiming termination of the COVID-19 Local Emergency. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Elaine? Motion would be in order, then?
I'll move Resolution 10911.
I second.
Is this a public hearing?
Yeah.
No, it's just a resolution.
Okay.
Are there any speaker cards for this item?
No. Sarah, did you say you had a comment?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchilla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mayor Howell, for the next item, I'm going to recuse myself for a financial conflict. I am a restaurant owner with a parklet.
Okay, that brings us to New Business, item 13.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. This is a direct follow-up to the last item in that this brings forward a request or a consideration for creating a permanent option for outdoor dining. So the permits that we issued under the emergency order were done at a staff level with review in an expedited way with no fees paid, but we still did review by all the city departments to ensure that safety requirements were being met. And so what this does as a result of the direction from council at your last meeting is create a path for people to request temporary outdoor dining on city property. During the pandemic, I'm not going to go through the same background that Elaine just covered, but just to let you know that during the COVID period, we issued about 10 temporary outdoor dining permits on city-owned property. This included parklets and other parking areas and sidewalk areas and things like that. There were conditions put on all of those projects, and the vast majority of the permits on or the outdoor seating areas that were approved during the pandemics still exist. There were also some temporary outdoor dining projects approved on private property in other areas of the city. This is not intended to cover that because those are done under a separate process. So this is just where it's involving city property and city streets. Here's some examples and photos. You're all familiar with most of these, but you can see there's a wide range of parklet designs and types. And that's true if you were to Google and see these, you know, throughout the state and nation and world, really, was a pretty common solution for outdoor dining during the pandemic. What the new process would do moving forward is establish a more formal process with application forms that require plans and materials, payment of fee, which would be our existing site design review fee. An encroachment permit would be required, so in total, less than $500 for something like a parklet. The city review, and that would cover staff review time, police, fire, public works, parks, and community development, which is planning, building, and engineering. And we would be looking at specific conditions of approval that are put in the ordinance in front of you this evening that cover things like, this is not a conveyance of property rights. You have to ensure that the improvements don't interfere with vehicle or pedestrian traffic. They're, the improvements are subject to modification and cancellation with notice really at any time. These would be annual permits that would be required to be renewed annually. They would have to be ADA compliant and meet all local rules and regulations as it relates to things like alcohol and ABC compliance. There would only be allowed temporary structures, not permanent structures, and they would have to be removed when the permit expires or was otherwise terminated or canceled. And then finally, the requirement for liability insurance and to indemnify the city for those temporary improvements. So since the notifications went out after your council meeting last week, I received several emails and phone calls, mostly in support of allowing outdoor dining on city streets, you know, period, and other city properties. There were a few concerns in emails about whether this new process was going to create a burden unnecessarily, but, you know, there wasn't a lot of information about the process or specific complaints about what had been drafted in the process, just, you know, wanting to make sure that it wasn't going to be too cumbersome for existing permities to kind of continue their operations. And that's certainly our intent, and I'll talk about that in a minute. There was certainly one comment about the outdoor dining being ADA accessible, and that's something that we have already looped back on the existing projects about, and permities are providing that compliance or modification for compliance. We have one comment about needing design controls and notifications for this type of thing. We certainly didn't do that during the process, but we could amend that if that's the, you know, desire of the council. And then late today, oh, I'm sorry, one other concern about impact to vehicle travel lanes, which would be part of our safety review with any application, obviously. And then there were concerns expressed late in the day with an email about, you know, sequel exemptions and things like that. But we're confident that the process that we've set up will achieve what the council directed, which was to, you know, create a path for people to do really what they're doing now under the current order. So we're recommending approval of the ordinance and for the council to introduce and do first reading, and we would bring second reading back to you at your next meeting, which is September 27. The ordinance would be effective 30 days from that date if the city council moved forward, which would be October 27. If you terminate, like you did this evening, the local emergency order on October 1, the existing permits expire on that date. But existing permits can either remove their encroachments before then and tell us that they are not interested in continuing their project, or they can say, we intend to continue our outdoor dining, and we will submit an application to the city no later than October 27, the effective date, so that we can process that expeditiously. So with that, are there any questions for staff?
So just on that last point, you're saying that existing improvements can remain so long as they apply for a new permit?
Yes, no later than the 27th of October.
Got it. Thank you.
So I think the only thing that needs to be added to that is that if they have not submitted that request by October 27, then they need to have whatever's there removed?
Yes. That would be, that might be a process for us. We'll certainly be notifying and making sure that the 10 existing permits are all fully aware of the timeline and the process. We really want to know, you know, if they want to continue. If they don't, then we'll work with them on, you know, getting improvements removed. But we expect, based on conversations, that most of them will want to continue, and then we'll help walk them through that process.
Okay. It's a little bit weird because we're saying that they have to remove them by October 1 or submit a permit by the end of October. So that's kind of strange.
And it really has to do with the action you took this evening and the effective date of the ordinance.
Okay.
Pam, can you go back a couple slides to the, yeah, the fees? So when folks were doing this during the height of the pandemic, there was no charge, right? They just had to pay for the construction or whatever, the parklet.
Right.
So I do think it's fair that now that we're talking about making it permanent, that there is some cost because they're getting a benefit that other businesses aren't. But I'm just curious how you came up with those amounts?
The intent is to cover staff time for review under, you know, same kind of policy, and this site design review is something that we would use for private property, and so that was an appropriate fee that's already been established by city council resolution.
And that would be, you pay that every 12 months?
Every 12 months, yes.
Okay. I have a question about that, Pam. Because assuming that somebody comes in on October 25, and we then now go about reviewing whatever it was they probably already have constructed, why would we have to have them do that year after year after year? That makes no sense to me. That should be a one-time thing unless they're going to change it.
Yeah.
If they're going to change it, we shouldn't have to, shouldn't be charged in that next year.
Yeah, I might, city attorney might want to address that, but I think what we talked about was making sure that we are ensuring that they're in compliance with the conditions and the provisions based on the fact that they're using city property, that this would be a way for us to maintain and control. We do that with encroachment permits and things like that.
If I may add, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the council can also instruct staff to come up with a renewal fee.
Yeah.
So it's something less, if it's more routine, something's already in place, and just double-check, make sure the codes haven't been updated. That's probably appropriate for subsequent renewals.
Yeah, because I just think that 280 for that full review is too high.
Okay.
Yeah. But the renewal fee, city attorney, is the encroachment fee, right? 132 plus $1.91 times whatever the square feet.
It should be something that the community development staff evaluate because, as you know, we cannot charge more than the reasonable cost of providing the service. So the renewal should probably be less time-consuming than initial project review.
Makes sense. Yeah, I'm with Mayor on the first line. I think it's a one-time. That's my opinion as well. And one of those comments also, Councilmember Aquino, I know you are the one who is bringing, okay. And the next one, yep, it's cumbersome, costly. So this is usually the 10 days. I know, we have a schedule, set timelines for residential and commercial also. This falls under those minor one of those with the 10 total business days.
Right. This would be something that would be done administratively likely within two weeks, assuming we have a complete application with all the materials that allow us to do that evaluation. So it's really quick. We did them, I think, within five or seven days, as long as we had enough information to evaluate them during the pandemic.
Yeah. We want to promote this more and more, right? You know, that's what the silver lining of the COVID. So no, I'm clear. Thank you.
And we do have a fee update that we're going to be looking at after the zoning code update, so I think we can address the renewal separately and just adopt this fee. I just looked at the ordinance. I don't think there's anything in here that needs to change based on that direction. We can just put a renewal fee into our fee update when we bring that forward before the next annual renewal would come forward.
Did the ordinance reference a fee? I didn't see that.
Yes, ma'am. 020 Section C, Charlie.
Oh, okay. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so again, I have no problem with the encroachment permit fee, and assuming that the $1.92 per square foot is $1.92 per square foot of city property that they're using. But again, we've got to come back with a different number. It can't be 280 a year for reviewing something that's already there.
Okay. No problem.
Any other questions? We do have some requests to speak from the public. First speaker is John Bowles, then Karen Holmes, then Loretta Hettinger, and then Jester Maitzel.
Mayor Howell and council, thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name is John Bowles. My wife, Tawny, and I own Reset Cafe by Day, which is on Sutter Street in the Historic District, and we share a parklet with the Vice Mayor's Taqueria. Over the last two and a half years, we have been deeply invested in the struggle to survive, really. But more than that, a commitment to tell a story of hope and resilience for our city and for our district, and there have been so many great stories along the way. I wish I had so much time tonight to be able to tell you all the stories of generosity and hope that just kind of peaked up along the way. But tonight, I want you to hear this story. If it weren't for outdoor dining, Reset would be a thing of the past. It would be another casualty of this cruel pandemic, and COVID-19 is the devil. Hashtag that. In the early days of the parklets, in the shadows of these red umbrellas and the comfort of $600 Mr. Fans, our community came out to celebrate a glimmer of hope that maybe, just maybe, we were going to make it. And since then, through a generous city grant, thousands of our own dollars, and in some cases, our own labor, we've built these parklets that we have today, and they're beautiful. And now, really, they just belong. They look like they belong. They feel like they belong. From day one and continuing through today, the number one question that we get from customers is, is the city going to allow you to keep these parklets forever? And of course, I have a conversation with them and say, the city is our friend. They're on our side. This is a conversation. Our world has changed. Expectations have changed, and the way that we dine has changed. world has changed. Expectations have changed, and the way that we dine has changed. People expect to eat outside now, not only because they become used to it, because we just think differently. If it weren't for our parklets, even today, there's quite a few customers that would not dine at Reset. People have tasted outdoor dining in our district and throughout the city, and to not have that option just seems like a, a step backwards. It seems odd. And the, the common sentiment is, this is the way that we've always imagined it. When people dine in our parklets, they stay in the district, they roam the streets, they visit the galleries, the boutiques, the, the game stores, the souvenir shops, and, and they spend time, and they spend their dollars there in the district, experiencing all that it has to offer. So the parklets are now a district staple. They're a key to life in the district. And quite frankly, the wake of this pandemic is still strong. It didn't go away with the mask mandates. Our costs are still through the roof. We're paying in some cases, three times what we were paying for food, for supplies than we did three years ago, finding workers, supply issues, all of that still remains. And the crowds aren't still back to what they were pre-pandemic. So Reset still struggles, and we look forward to a day when the word thriving replaces the word surviving. And in order to do that, we still need forward thinking. We still need new ideas. We still need innovation. We still need risk-taking, and we still need these parklets. So please keep them permanent. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Karen Holmes.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here. Hello, how are you? And I am not even here as myself this evening. I am here speaking for Dylan Morrow, who is the owner of Sam Horns and Fat Rabbit. And he also has a parklet in front of his location. He was not able to be here tonight because of a family event, so I am speaking on behalf of him, reading his words. So, dear council members, I wanted to start by saying thank you to the city and to FHDA for their support in getting the parklets and outdoor dining set up during the challenges that we had with the pandemic closures. They were a big part of our business, being able to survive that challenging time period. Also, wanted to thank our business neighbors and the overall Folsom community for embracing the outdoor dining, seeing the benefit that the features brought to our historic district, and making our historic district a more vibrant and attractive destination to both local and out-of-town visitors. Moving forward, the team from both Sam Horns and Fat Rabbit are 100% in support of making outdoor dining a permanent option in the historic district. The benefits go way beyond just the direct positive impact for each business that can participate. We are well aware and fully appreciate the direct benefit to us. Outdoor dining brings the district to another level, creating an atmosphere that will attract many visitors and further solidify the historic district as the crown jewel of the city of Folsom. If we are provided this option, we would fully support any guidelines or infrastructure that need to be put in place to make outdoor dining a positive experience and success for everyone across the board. Thank you for all your support, and we look forward to continuing to work together to keep Folsom one of the best places to live and work in California.
Thank you, Karen slash Dylan. Loretta Hettinger.
First, I want to say that I endorse everything that John and Karen Dillon said. I think the parklets have been a wonderful idea, but I'm wearing my long-range planner hat now with regard to the content of the ordinance. As you noted on the screen up there, it's a, a site design fee, but there's nothing in the ordinance that gives the city the ability to reject a design that might be proposed when the pandemic is in the long rearview mirror. So there needs to be some provision for the city to be able to say that big plastic gaudy fence is not appropriate around a parklet. Not that anybody's proposed that. The designs that the historic district has come up with are very appropriate, but who knows what the future holds, and the staff needs to be able to say no. And the other item that needs to be in the ordinance is that it says there'll be notification if the parklets need to be removed, but it doesn't say how much notice they get. Can the city come in and give them 24 hours' notice? I don't know. And I think that that is not something that our staff now is likely to do. But as I said, I'm putting on my long-range planner hat, and I would suggest that you make a few changes in that regard. Thanks.
Thanks, Loretta. Justin?
I know you guys probably don't want to see me for a third time tonight, so thanks for hearing me out. Let me start by saying I'm a big fan of the parklets on Sutter Street. I love going down there, drinking my coffee there, drinking my beer there, eating my food there. 100% supporter. But I also think that as a business owner, I've entered into an agreement called an Exclusive Use of Common Area Agreement, which could be used to look at as an example for the same arrangement. This is city property that's being used, and what we're doing is basically granting an exclusive use. So I think what you guys need to consider is, is do we want it to be an exclusive use? Do we want it to be a specific business that has access to that parklet? Or do we want all the businesses to be able to have that? Some of the benefits of exclusive use have already been highlighted. One of them is they can indemnify the city if anything were to happen on those, and so they can cover some of the insurance. One of the other things that's common in a UCA or an Exclusive Use of Common Area Agreement is, is that that person will pay the maintenance of those things. So if something, if a parklet were to fall into disrepair over time, you could require them to repair it, or you could have a maintenance cost associated with repairing it as a city. The other thing you could do is, is charge them a fee in order to have access to this. A good corollary to this in the private business world is looking at an end cap with a patio space, which is typically a restaurant space, versus an inline space that's involved. Typically, you're looking at 10, 20 cents a square foot extra across the end cap space in order to have access to that patio, sometimes more. So I don't think what we're looking at for fees is unreasonable, and maybe we don't look at using it just to cover staff costs. I know there's been a lot of discussions lately about revenue, how to use city property to its most effective way. And so I'd like to say that this is a little bit of an opportunity, because the benefits are going to come to that business that has that. I don't want, you know, I, I definitely don't want the parklets to go away. I just want you guys to think about this as, hey, it is, it is really has some very good corollaries that you can use from the business community on how you manage these going forward. So insurance, maintenance costs, possible revenue source that's associated with it. I'm definitely not saying that that is, is, you know, we need to make it so high that we, we shut down these things. I'm just saying it's something to consider going forward. And if that's not the case, then, you know, maybe you look at taking them over as true common area space. You let the business owners use them, absolutely. But then we maintain as the city, you know, the fencing, some tables, just like we do a park right now. When we say parklet, that would be a core, good corollary. We just make them into a public park that's there. All the business, customers can still use it, but it doesn't mean you have to order from that business in order to sit in them. So something to consider, exclusive use versus common area. So I hope my comments help you to reach a great decision on this coming up. It's not an easy one. And like I said, I really hope to keep eating and drinking outside on Sutter Street. So thanks for hearing me out tonight.
We have no other requests from the public. Any questions of staff, comments?
I, I do have a question. So going with his idea about a common area, my question is, with the ABC, and I don't, maybe John Bowles might be the best person to answer this. I, I don't know if you, if you said that this is just kind of a common area and anybody can use it, can your patron then take, you know, buy a glass of wine from your place and go take it out there? I don't know the answer to that. Want to come up here?
Sure. That's a great question. When it, when it comes to alcohol, I, I can't even have somebody purchase alcohol on my side of the parklet and drink it on the other side of the parklet. So there are rules with ABC about that, and that would be something that would have to be considered.
Any other questions?
I guess for the Community Development Director, do you feel like you have enough license to say no if somebody came with purple fencing?
Yeah.
Maybe, but my suggestion is maybe one friendly amendment to Section 12.25.020E, where in, we say, "Community Development Department shall, in consultation with Public Works Department, Parks and Rec Department, Fire Department, and Police Department, determine the sustainability and appropriateness of the proposed use." I would add and design of the parking space on city street and city-owned property requested by the restaurant for outdoor dining.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a good, that was a good suggestion.
Yeah. My, my only point is, I think John mentioned Rosario and John, they're using together, you know, sometimes they're, they're small, small units, and if two can join together and they come as a single application, is that still doable, or?
I don't think we restrict that now, nor would we in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess the only thing you'd have to do is have both names on the, on the permit.
So that's where probably we encourage, sorry, Mayor, that's where we encourage, you know, the nearby, you know, talk through your friends. I think that probably serves the purpose of what Justin was, you know, suggesting. If there are nearby businesses can come together and use as a common property, and they all can split the cost, however it is, we should be okay.
Yeah, so long as it doesn't confuse the ABC issue.
Because that's a totally separate issue that the city has no control over. And to be honest with you, I suspect that what is going on now with ABC, because ABC was looking the other way on the footprints of existing liquor licenses, beer and wine licenses, they have been for basically the last three years. So that's, but that's a whole separate issue that the city really doesn't have any control over. I, I think Loretta makes a good point about there being some sort of reasonable notice if, if a parklet's going to need to be removed. But I can't imagine that anybody's going to be expecting somebody to remove it within 24 hours. I don't think that's ever going to happen.
Maybe another friendly suggestion to put the word reasonable in front of the word notice in Section 12.25.010B.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Can I ask one more thing? And what about maintenance that was kind of brought up?
Are you talking about Justin's suggestion?
Just in terms of, yeah, the general maintenance of the park.
I mean, I was gonna, earlier when we were talking about what the fees structure should be, these are inherently described and inherently are temporary structures. They're meant to be that way, so they can be demounted. So the condition of them is something that should be looked at periodically. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to unnecessarily burden any business owner, but the planning staff having the opportunity annually to go out and actually inspect it and make sure that it's in good condition, I think, is an important aspect of this.
Or maybe that's something that, you know, that to some extent gets added to, I don't know the frequency, but, you know, the Fire Department does inspections as well, and that's probably something that they ought to be looking at when they're looking at the rest of the facility.
Yeah, I, you know.
I, I think we can address, this ordinance gives us some latitude on conditions that can be added to the permit. So I think we could address things like the maintenance.
In, in the permit itself?
Yes.
Okay.
The literal condition of the structure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
The, the improvements, excuse me.
Any other questions or comments? If not, motion would be in order.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with the amendments suggested by the planning director or community development director.
I'll second on that one.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Challem Cherle?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Pam, I think you're clear, right? I want to, we want to make sure.
Yes, thank you. All clear.
And can I just make a comment? I think there's a little bit of confusion online. You know, this is relating to parklets and, and dining and stuff, but I think this, although it's related, this does not have to do with the street closures on the weekend of, for example, the 700 block. I think that's something that's been a little bit confusing to people. But I think one of the comments that I heard in relation to the parklets, while the people wanted them to continue, was the concern about the lack of disabled parking. And so maybe as we're working with FHDA, you know, any other street closures, I don't know if there's a way to do it where you close the 700 block except for that, the parking lot where the hacienda and stuff is, because there is some ADA parking in there. I don't know if that, if you have people coming in there, if it will kind of mess it up. But anyway, that was just kind of one of the things. But it's technically not, it's a separate issue from this.
It would be a separate issue from this. And, and there, there is adequate ADA parking in the historic district and Sutter Street specifically.
This is what, just for clarification, I know we are talking more of a historic on Sutter Street, but this resolution is for anywhere in the city, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up.
Can I just make a comment? Anybody with an ADA can park anywhere. It doesn't have to be designated as ADA. People with ADA can park at any spot.
Okay, so we are moving on to Item 14, modifications to City Folsom Cardroom Ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Howell. Councilmember Steve Banks, Community Development Department.
Stevie is more relaxed without a suit. That's cool. Thank you. Good seeing you that way.
Great seeing you as well. Thank you for your patience. The next project before you this evening is, city staff is seeking direction from the council policy direction regarding proposed modifications to the city's existing cardroom ordinance. To give you a little bit of background, the city began regulating cardrooms back in 1998, when Chapter 5.20 of the Folsom municipal code.
Sorry, that says 1988.
I'm sorry, 1988. Subsequently, the state began to take over control of regulating cardrooms, and in fact enacted a five-year moratorium on new cardrooms in 1995. Two years later, the state established the State Gambling Control Act, which essentially extended the moratorium on new cardroom licenses. However, the state did provide a little leeway with respect to existing cardrooms, and they allowed exceptions to that moratorium. And the city of Folsom actually took advantage of that exception and increased the number of permitted card tables within the city of Folsom to six, from six to nine in 2010. Under the current state guidelines, the city is actually allowed to increase the number of tables from nine to 11, which ties in with the proposal this evening. We have one or had one cardroom in the city of Folsom that was located at the Folsom Lake Bowl Center. It was called Lake Bowl Cardroom. And it's my understanding they had, they had between five and six cardrooms in, in, in operation for a period of time. However, with the COVID situation, the cardroom ceased to operate. But they were licensed for a maximum of nine card tables within their cardroom. As I mentioned, they're not in operation anymore. In fact, they're in negotiations to sell their assets to Delta CLP out of Stockton, California. Delta C operates three cardrooms in the Stockton area, and they are seeking to operate a cardroom at a different location within the city of Folsom. The new cardroom would be required to get a license from the city of Folsom Police Department as well as the state, and a conditional use permit would also be required to be obtained from the Planning Commission. Delta CLP submitted an application to the city of Folsom in June to amend the cardroom ordinance, and they are seeking to change three things specifically. One, they want to increase the number of card tables from nine to 11, and they've stated it's necessary for their competitive advantage with other jurisdictions in the area to have more tables to compete with other cities and counties. They also want to add language that would allow for up to 15 card tables in the future if the state were to relax their restrictions and allow increases in cardrooms going forward. And lastly, they're seeking to allow backline betting, which is the, the process where someone can stand behind the card table and place bets in a game. And currently, that's prohibited within the city of Folsom. So that's the three things Delta CLP is seeking to obtain through modifications to the city's cardroom ordinance. Here's the specific language, and I'm not going to read through this, but it's in your, in your packet. And in the red at the bottom of the page, you can see, again, they're seeking to increase the number of card tables that are permitted in a cardroom from nine to 11, and also to increase up to 15 tables if the state were to relax their restrictions on card tables in jurisdictions. And secondly, this language is simply links, backroom betting, the language prohibiting it is being eliminated, therefore allowing backroom betting to occur. City staff is in the early stages of evaluating this proposal to amend the cardroom ordinance. We wanted to get policy direction from the City Council before we got too deep into the weeds with this evaluation. Certainly, we'd evaluate traffic, noise, parking, crime, and those types of things. I can tell you, we, we did reach out to other jurisdictions, code enforcement divisions, other jurisdictions, cities, and counties in Sacramento, and they did not indicate there were any noticeable issues with existing cardrooms specific to those cardrooms, negative impact with those cardrooms. I've also spoken with the City of Folsom Police Chief in terms of the operation of Folsom Lake Bowl when it was operating as a cardroom, and the full chief, Police Chief did not express any concerns about the operation of the former cardroom, nor the increase in number of card tables if that were to occur. The applicant has provided a financial impact analysis, which is in your packet this evening, also showing the economic benefits of cardrooms. Again, staff is seeking direction from the City Council, policy direction on whether you are supportive of amending the cardroom ordinance, and secondly, whether you support the language which I shared with you previously on the screen. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant and their team is also here this evening. We have more specific questions of them.
Any questions?
Steve, if you don't mind, could you go back to Slide four, please, on that 15? 11 to 15, I know they are asking nine to 11.
They're asking for nine to 11, but if the state were to allow further future increases, and I think currently the state, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's a 25% maximum increase at a time.
Right.
And so if the state were to allow subsequent incremental increases, they have established 15 is that number they would like to have allowed for their cardroom.
Yeah, is that's going to be a new request coming to City Council and verifying the location and all those, or it is automatic?
Well, again, they have to obtain a license from the city, from the state, and they also have to obtain an approval of a conditional use permit for whichever location they choose.
Yeah, this one is in general the code we are putting.
This is in general for the municipal code, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, with that, that same paragraph, I, I know they explained this to me, but I'm a little unclear. So the part about when, when would voter approval be required? And if we do this language, it's not required if, if the state relaxes its numbers?
I think they're looking, they're seeking to avoid voter approval
Right.
if there are changes to state level, that could just automatically implement it.
Okay. Okay.
It probably would be worthwhile just for the viewing public to have a sense of the economic impact that has been suggested by the applicants.
And perhaps I can let the applicant speak to that, that's their report that they created for Folsom Lake Bowl when it was in operation in 2019.
Yeah, I think that would be of interest to people, so they understand that, you know, this is an entertainment venue, and there are some, you know, benefits to the city as a taxing authority.
Do you want to have them come up and?
Yeah, that's, that's an invitation.
Invitation.
Mayor Howell and members, Robert G. Holder is appearing this evening on behalf of Delta CLP, the business that hopes to open a, a cardroom in Folsom. With me tonight is our client's specialist in gambling, California gambling law. And she's formerly was chief of staff for a fellow named Tom Harmon. Tom Harmon is not the football player who played for the LA Rams, but State Senator Tom Harmon. And after that, Tiffany Lictic is her name, Tiffany is here. She served on the commission that controlled gambling in California. She was appointed by Governor Schwarzenegger, reappointed by Governor Brown. And when she finished her tour of duty on the commission, she went into practice to advise folks on the law and the pitfalls of this business, and she can address those issues, I think, more confidently than I can. So if out further ado, I'd like to have Tiffany come up.
Hello, Mayor Howell and councilmembers. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'll just start with the question from councilmember, you know, regarding the language here. So under the existing Califor, the Gambling Control Act statewide, everything is basically frozen as to what existed on January 1, 1996. And you cannot increase any cardrooms, any tables within a jurisdiction, or tables within a specific individual cardroom by more than 24.99% of what was in existence in 1996 without going to the voters. The allowances that have occurred to table increases since the moratorium have been in place are statutes that say, notwithstanding that, a local ordinance can be changed for two or three tables. Those are generally what there's been with, without having to go to the voters for that. So what this will do, will reserve, whenever those ordinances are passed by the legislature, you will basically be adopting those to capture them for the city. It does not mean that it goes directly to the cardroom operator. Cardroom operator would still have to apply to get those tables, and the local council or their designee would decide whether or not to provide them for the cardroom to be operated. The second, I believe it was in the council packet, the page of, I don't know if it's available.
Good, so I thought the audience would be interested in knowing what the economic impact is, because we have spent an enormous amount of time talking about that over the years.
I've got a copy, perhaps you can put it on the projector?
Yes, sorry, I, everybody's different on what's available on the website.
Excuse me, I misspoke. Everyone has access to the, the council packet.
Okay.
The likelihood that they all dug all the way to this particular page is
That's why we can just, but we can just put it on the, on the.
That's right.
Awesome. Gosh, I haven't seen these since elementary school. I mean, it's a lot nicer than the one we had, but.
I think you need to change it over on the little screen, Steve.
I got it.
Oh.
It just takes it a second to transfer over. You can zoom it out, there's a dial on the.
Yeah.
Yep. There you go.
Oops. Zoom out, out.
So what you're looking at is just one page of a study that was commissioned by the California Gaming Association. That is the association that is representative of the majority of the card tables and cardrooms in the state of California. They did one of these pages for each cardroom that is in existence in the state. There are currently around 75 active licenses for cardrooms. You guys are unique in the City of Folsom that you actually have one, given the moratorium. This was, these numbers were obviously put together based on your current licensee, which is Folsom Lake Bowl. You'll see that the jobs there, direct impact between gaming and non-gaming is 40 employees. The Delta C folks operating 11 employ, uh, operating 11 tables would increase that number to approximately 100 between gaming and non-gaming employees. And obviously, the attendant economic impact and wages would rise with the increase in number of employees, all of those. So this is a very conservative estimate based on a very, a much smaller operation that is currently or was being conducted prior to COVID. If there's any questions regarding any of the numbers, I believe I provided also the, the full link. I only, first, I mean, it's a, it's a huge report with all of the different cities. So this is, again, just Folsom's cardroom, but there's more information on the, how the study was conducted and, and all of the math stuff.
Very good. That's, that's what I wanted to daylight, is just for people to understand that this is a relatively robust, large business that we're talking about.
It is, it is, robust, but very, very highly regulated.
Certainly.
I have a question, and this is more for Stacy. So Stacy, since the pandemic, did we, we evidently had to have seen a decline if, if the room was closed and we didn't see that revenue, which means that we, we would just be gaining an extra 25% on what was previously generated through this, through the cardroom.
So we don't see this one as a direct, like, sales tax provider in our top 25? So that economic impact would be throughout our whole city, then pass through, if somebody goes to your restaurant, buys food. So we, I couldn't just look at this and say that there was a direct correlation in our reduction of revenue, because it was
Okay.
with impacts everywhere.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, in closing, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Our client hopes that the council will see through to adopt these changes to the code. And if they do, we hope to go forward with applications for the license and for a conditional use permit to operate in Folsom. And right now, we've identified a location that I'd like to share with you. It's not firm or secure, obviously, because we don't know if, yet if we'll be able to locate here. But it's out on Iron Point Road, the old Applebee's site, which I think is an excellent site from the city's point of view. It's not near a school, it's not near housing, and it's just on the edge of the outlets, across the street from the jewelry store. So the fellow that makes a lot of money at the poker table can go over there and buy a trinket for his girl. And, and the guy that stayed too long and wore himself out and can't really afford to drive home can go across the street to the hotel and get a room for the night. So it's a, it's a generally good location, or walk down the street to McDonald's and get a burger.
And then take light rail home.
There you go. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
This is one where the staff is looking for direction on whether to proceed with these, bringing these changes forward, or you want?
Correct. We have, we have an application in hand, but we're seeking policy direction before we bring this back before you.
So my answer to your two questions you asked is yes and yes. Is that what you're asking all of us to provide?
Yeah, the applicant has provided specific language to make amendments to the cardroom ordinance, and we're seeking policy direction, whether you support that language. Do you want to modify that language? Make any changes to that language? That's what we're seeking.
I personally support the language.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the proposed language, thank you.
Right. Sarah?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm good. You have done research already. We used to have the cardroom at the Folsom and closed because of the COVID, and you have verified with the Police Chief and other sides that this is not the new thing coming to Folsom. But management is changing. That's probably the only thing, with some increase.
It's not a management change. The
No.
Cardroom at Lake Bowl closed a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And they're selling their, their, the assets, the tables and chairs and
To somebody else.
To somebody else.
Somebody else, right?
Who has experience operating.
Operating, yes. Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure the, you know, listeners, you know, and the residents are, you know, looking at that. You know, it's a thoroughly vetted process, and this is where the staff is recommending. Thank you.
So I think we have direction to go ahead and bring back amendments to the cardroom ordinance for you at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so we will move on to Item 15, zoning code update.
Mayor Howell, members of the City Council, I'm Desmond Parrecton, principal planner in the Community Development Department.
I got you.
Okay, you got it. Okay. I'm here, I'm here before you tonight, seeking direction as well on key changes to the administrative and review processes in our, our zoning code, so that we can bring those back to you as part of the update. There are several areas that we wanted to focus on tonight. The reason that we're coming, seeking direction this evening is, is really because we've, we've heard input not only from the council, the commission, the community, but we've also gotten some conflicting direction as well on, on this, this topic. In addition to that, our, our consultant, interior harness, who's working with us on the zoning code update, has recommended some best practices. Before, but before we moved on with those, we wanted to talk to you about these, these areas, so that when we bring back the ordinance to you later on next year, that it's consistent with the direction that we're talking about here tonight. So what I'm going to do this evening is present these four topics, the design review process, use permits and minor modifications, public hearings, notices and outreach, and the appeals process. In each one of these, I'll identify key questions to think about as you consider the information presented. I'll present what our current process is, some of the issues associated with that current process, what other jurisdictions around our region are doing, and then ultimately a staff recommendation for consideration. I'll do that for each one of these items, and at the end of that, I'll present all the recommendations for, for, for comments and discussion this evening. With, at the conclusion of this, really some recommendations or direction related to staff's, staff's recommendation on this. So once we get that direction, we'll go back and complete the administrative and review sections of the new ordinance, along with the other work that we're doing on that. And then in mid 2023, we'll come back with a complete public review draft that will be available to, to you and to the public for a period of 30 days to receive comments. During that period, we will also do a workshop with you, with the Planning Commission, and, and with the public as well. Now, one of the things that I wanted to point out about the discussion tonight is that this is focused on the rest of the city excluding the, the historic district. And again, if there's any specific plans that have their own processes, then those would not be affected by this. Otherwise, if they defer to the zoning code, they would be. The reason why we're dealing with the historic district separately is based on the feedback that we've gotten from, from members of the Historic District Commission, as well as the, the public and other stakeholders in the historic district. They would like to have kind of more time and work with staff to talk about the variety of different issues there. And the concern was that when we look at the citywide process, we, we might not have, or might not be dedicating sufficient time to the historic district. So we are recommending, because we need to update our, our zoning code and get that wrapped up, we are recommending moving forward on the rest of the zoning code, adopting the current regulations as they relate to the historic district, and then upon adoption in mid 2023, doing the more detailed and focused effort in the historic district to look at issues of design and form and preservation, and also appropriate uses and their review processes as well. And then ultimately, that will get adopted and brought into the new zoning code within about a six to nine month time period. So some key city policies that are guiding this, this review of the administrative processes are specifically, obviously, the general plan requirement that our new zoning code be consistent with the general plan. But also, our housing element talks about the, the need to review our permit processes and our review times, and to shorten those particularly for housing, especially affordable housing. So starting with the first issue, which is our design review process. The question before you, the questions before you tonight are, should we continue to require Planning Commission approval for projects if the design not only complies with the city development standards, but also our new objective, design standards? And if so, if we want to continue that, then what is the goal of the Planning Commission review for those projects, you know, that already comply with development and design standards? So to give you a little bit of background related to that question, in 2018, August of 2018, we adopted the new general plan. In there is the land use element, which lays out all the different appropriate uses throughout the city, whether that's single unit or single. the city, whether that's single unit or single family residential, industrial, commercial, and so forth. In that, in that document, there's also a section that talks about community design, establishing goals and policies related to appropriate design throughout the city. In addition, along with the zoning code update that we're doing, we will now, we are required under state law to adopt objective design standards for the review of residential projects going forward. This was expanded most recently this year to include not just multifamily projects, but also single family projects under Senate Bill 8. So our current thresholds right now for what goes to the planning commission for design review is any commercial or non-residential project that's 1,000 square feet or more, and any residential project that's three or more units. And that also includes significant exterior modifications that include, for example, a change in building materials. So I know this is a complex table, but to kind of boil it down, more jurisdictions have increased what's seen at the, or handled at the director level. And in some, on, on one extreme, you have a community like Elk Grove, which allows up to 150, you know, less than 150 units to be reviewed at the director level, and, and 10,000 square feet for commercial projects. And then you have other communities like Roseville, where it's, you know, there's, they have very little that's tangible at the director level. We kind of fall at the lower end of this, but generally, there's a trend where more stuff is being handled at the director level. What staff is recommending is that we increase the thresholds for the, for director level review to 10 units or less for residential, and 5,000 square feet or less for commercial. In your packet, there's some examples of, of different commercial projects and their relative sizes based on recent lease data. Shifting to item number two, on permitting and modifications, the key question there is, should the city change its current process to allow for some use permits and requests for minor deviations to be handled at the director level? So right now, dealing first with the use permit process, we have both a major use permit and a minor use permit. But they're exactly the same process. There is no difference. They both have to go to the planning commission.
Desmond, I'm sorry, before we move on to the next item, did anybody have any comments on the design, on the, the unit number and square footage?
Go, go back to that screen?
Yeah.
I would be fine with that.
I have a kind of, I have a question. So given that we are both tinkering with the, the way that we describe density and the threshold for additional units, I know that it would have ended up going to the planning commission probably anyway, in spite of those changes. But a project like the increased units at Canyon Terrace, that's one where if, if you shrunk it down a bit and had the same level of density added, and maybe it's nine units, but you're really, really packing a site that's already existing with additional units, it still feels like that's something that needs the daylight of a hearing, in spite of the fact that it may be perfunctory in its approval.
Just to clarify on that, these would be a project with 10 new units. If you're adding units, that, that's a major alteration. And so that would go to the planning commission.
Okay, but what you said was, this is a threshold, this is a threshold for, okay, I'm sorry, let me back up. The, so you're saying an alteration to a site would always go to the planning commission?
A major alteration, yes.
What constitutes major?
Yeah, so that would be a significant change to the building, something involving SEQA review, anything that would increase the density significantly, those would be examples.
In spite of the fact that it may be completely compliant with whatever the new density requirements are that we've, we're about to institute as part of this overall change?
That, that's correct. So in our current code, it says, any project with more than two units has to go to the planning commission. So that's, generally, that's been interpreted, any, any new project coming forward. So if it's more than a duplex, for example, it's going to the planning commission. And what we're saying here is, any project that comes forward that's proposing 10 new units, that that, if it's more than 10 units, that it would be going to the planning commission. Anything below that would be handled.
So 10, 10 units or more on a green field?
Well, it, it could be an infill site, but it, it would be an undeveloped.
An undeveloped site. Okay, or a redevelopment of a site.
Yeah. If they are changing an existing development, that's essentially a major modification, and they're adding units there, that would not be something that would be handled at the staff level. Because you've already got X number of units there, you're adding 10 more units, or nine more units, or whatever, then that's a major modification to the, to the site, which would go to planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, I, yeah.
I'm happy with the 5,000 square feet or less on commercial, but I'd rather see residential five units or less.
Why?
Because 10 units is almost building a little mini subdivision, and I think it should go to the commission.
Well, and again, just, just to clarify.
If you've got, if you've got a piece of property that by density rules is allowed to have nine units on it, why is that one particular? I'm just playing devil's advocate on that, challenging your logic here.
I think anything greater than, than five units is going to be perceived by the public, is to be creating a mini little neighborhood.
And I just mentioned, well, we'll have time at the end where we can talk about each one of the recommendations and just where.
Right. I'd just, I'd just rather get our comments and as we go through each one of these four subject matters. That's why I'm doing it that way.
Right. Is planning commission okay with this recommendation unanimously?
Well, we, we, we're actually bringing it to, to you because we've gotten mixed messages from the planning commission. Sometimes we've gotten comments like, why are we having to review this? And so rather than, than, we wanted to come directly to you, to be frank, to save time, get your direction, and then be able to turn this around.
So anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm very much about streamlining processes, making things more efficient. I would be fine with this recommendation, when in comparison to some, what the other cities do nearby.
Yeah, I agree with the vice mayor.
YK, where are you?
No, I just want clarification there, right? So you're getting mixed messages from planning team. Some are saying yes, some are saying no, or it's indirect review, and you're, because they're experts, we appointed them there to help us.
Yes, and in some cases, so based on the feedback we've gotten from our, our planning commission, and from the public and from the development community, as well as what we looked at throughout the region, you know, we've gotten a variety of different messages about what, what folks want and what other cities are doing. And so we wanted to come to you to get your thoughts on this, so that when we bring back these, these sections, we're not having to rewrite them in their entirety, that we're going the direction, you know, that, that you're comfortable with.
So, so where are you on 10 units and 5,000 square feet?
No, I haven't made up my mind yet. Because I know you're mixing all those, developers, community, planning. My question was very direct to planning. That's where everything goes. Right now, that's what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I, again.
No, this is what staff is recommending. Right now, anything more than two goes to the planning commission. They're talking about raising it to 10 units. And right now in commercial, anything greater than 1,000 square feet goes to the planning commission.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Shal, I'm Sherla, we have not taken this specific question to our, our planning commission. There have been, yeah, so that's.
Desmond, something that was very eye opening for me was the chart you showed, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think when you compare.
So there, there is a general trend to increasing it, but there are cities on, on the lower end as, as well. You've got, you've got Roseville with relatively minor alterations there, they're handled at the director level. Rockland, they do five units or five lots. They don't do any commercial. Then you have Rancho Cordova, that's got, you know, it has increased their standard. You got Elk Grove, that's kind of at the extreme. And you've got Citrus Heights, which is kind of in the middle.
So, so you don't have a?
I don't have an onset. I know, yeah.
Mike, where are you?
Yeah.
Sarah?
I have thoughts on it in total. And so I'd rather wait to make my comments at the end also.
Okay.
And members of the city council, Madam Mayor, if I may, all this is contingent upon our office reviewing for compliance with all those state housing laws, one of which is SB 35, that requires, as Desmond correctly indicated, that the council, the city adopt an objective, objective design standard for multifamily housing projects, which precludes discretionary review by public officials, meaning the commission.
So moving on to the permitting and modifications question, so as I mentioned earlier, we have a minor use permit and we have a major use permit. But the process is exactly the same. It's, it's still, they both have to go to planning commission, they both have to be, go through a public hearing process and, and all of that. The only difference is the fee. And so what you're, what you see is that we're a bit of an outlier here with the rest of the region. You know, we're the only ones that have either, you know, either, it's, it's called either an administrative use permit or a minor use permit. And we're the only ones that require that it go to commission. Now, everybody, of course, requires, with the possible exception of the city of Sacramento, requires that conditional use permits go to their planning commission. But we are the only one that requires a minor use permit or an administrative use permit to go to, to our planning commission. Now, an administrative use permit or minor use permit, you know, it's typically used for, for a use that's appropriate in the zoning, in that zoning district. But it just requires certain standard conditions to be associated with it that, you know, wouldn't apply to a project that's allowed by right. Some examples include hours of operations. For example, if you had a, a small restaurant or a wine tasting place that had an outdoor seating area in a C1 zone, which is a neighborhood commercial zone, and it's near residential, well, you'd want to apply hours of operation, so you don't have guests out there late in the night making noise that affects the, the residents. Similarly, if you had a grocery store in a C1 zone, you might want to place standard conditions on there related to deliveries and, you know, for appropriate hours for deliveries, and a prohibition on truck idling and things like that, because the C1 zones tend to be near residential areas. Similarly, for a hardware store, you might want to have certain conditions related to outdoor storage, so that it's, you know, it's appropriately screened and fenced and, and those types of things. For a massage establishment or a salon, you want to, you might want to condition them for compliance with their state licensing requirements, those types of things. So what staff is recommending with respect to use permits is that we create a director level administrative use permit for appropriate uses in that zone that require standard conditions. Any discussion on this, or would you like me to?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I, I'm fine with this. I, I like to have the appearance of being a more business friendly city. And I think putting it down to the administrative, to the administrative use permit, it'll eliminate a cost for the individual, correct?
Yeah, it would be a much lower cost than having to go to, to planning commission, yes.
I would support this.
I'm sorry.
And duration also, right? Approval.
Yes.
And time.
Correct, yes. Time and, yeah, and cost.
Mike? Sarah, you want to comment?
With respect to the minor modifications process, so under our current regulations, if someone is deviating at all, even if it's a minor deviation from our, our development standards, what they have to do is they have to either pursue the variance route, or they have to get a planned development permit. Now, planned development permits are generally used for slightly larger projects that are varying. But both of those require planning commission approval. And the variance has strict findings that not everyone can, can meet. It's really about a, a very unique situation. In addition to that, since both of these have to be approved by the planning commission, this is a time consuming and costly process. I wanted to give you some examples of the types of encroachments that I'm talking about, and then we'll kind of look at what some of the other jurisdictions in the region have done. So, for example, we often run into these kinds of situations where you've got unusual lot sizes or lot areas, or you've got particular site conditions. Now, some of those may qualify for variances, but some may not. So you might have somebody who has a protected tree, they're trying to build an addition, you know, their addition would take out the, the tree, but if they, you know, if they did some adjustments and bumped out a little bit into the setback, they'd be able to avoid the, the tree. Another example is the non-conformity situation, where we have a house that was built with a one car garage. They want to do improvements to their home, but because they're a current non-conforming use, and they, they would have to address the garage situation, because they're required to have a two car garage, before they could proceed with those, those types of, you know, a small addition or improvements to the home. And they may not have the room to put in the front in addition to their garage, or that it may significantly ruin the design of the home by, by trying to do that, not to mention the expense. So, you know, having a, a method where the, the director could grant that in, in certain situations, you know, would be helpful. Another example, which we are encountering more and more, is when a business does, you know, an upgrade to that business, a lot of exterior improvements, maybe some tenant improvements in the inside. But that also triggers, triggers the current parking lot improvement requirements, and they're required to put parking lot shading trees in. Now, that ends up creating a much more enjoyable and kind of livable environment for, for their customers and for the city. But it often results in the loss of one or two parking spaces, which then puts them into a deficit, which can't really be alleviated without having to go to the planning commission to grant, you know, a modification in that situation.
But that's a weird situation, because we've got a whole bunch of places in town that are not in deficit parking situations to begin with.
I'm sorry.
We have a lot of locations in town that are not in deficit parking situations to begin with.
That's, that's correct. But we have had a few that have gone through this remodel process and have landed in that particular circumstance.
Certain here, Salon May, maybe? I think it was.
Yeah. And then there, there have been some others as well. The, looking at the rest of the region, most of them do allow, have a, a minor deviation process that allows anywhere from 10% up to 40% deviation from the typical things like setbacks and lot coverage and, and parking and so forth. And again, for the most part, those are handled, or almost exclusively, those are handled at the director level. So what we are recommending is that we create a director level minor modification process that allows up for a 10% maximum deviation from our development standards with specific findings. The reason we added the specific findings piece is to make sure there's not an abuse of, of this. There needs to be, you know, good reason for the deviation, that there's not another way to accomplish this, so forth. So those would be developed by, by staff and then brought.
Okay. Mike, where are you on this?
I just have a question. The, the example that you used earlier about setback deviations, for instance, where maybe the setback is six and somebody wants five, the 10% wouldn't do it. That's six inches in that instance. So I'm, I'm less hung up on this, this deviation number. I'd actually rather it be silent and some discretion be, some further discretion be allowed.
Rosario?
I support the staff recommendation. I think, again, I, just looking at even the chart before. I always have issues when there are bottlenecks and we make it more difficult to do business. So I would support this recommendation.
So are you with Mike in letting the, in kind of ignoring this number? Because it, as he said, it's not one foot, it's six inches.
Because that creates a real hard threshold.
Go back to the, pass, to the. Only because reasonable is so vague.
Well, I mean, a bigger number than it, at the very least, I think is sensible. Maybe 25.
25?
Yeah, find the middle ground here.
I would support that.
Okay. YK?
Pam, what do you think on the variance? I know you're the one at the end is going to be allowing.
YK, they're the ones that came up with the staff recommendation.
No, they're only giving 10%.
Yeah, I, I think anywhere in the 10 to 25% range is reasonable and consistent with best practices that are used throughout the state.
Yeah. Now, when you propose 10%, there is a reason behind it. That's why I was asking that, that's the only reason.
Yeah, I mean, because we don't do anything now and having this deviation would be helpful for a lot of projects that we see in any given month or year. So that's why we're recommending that we, maybe it's a baby step and it allows us the opportunity to establish some clear findings and criteria so that, you know, decision-makers community get comfortable with that, with that level of, of review and.
Got it, thanks. Okay, so good, Rosario and Mike are at the 25% range. Are you okay with that? Okay, Sarah, are you still going to wait?
I'll weigh in here. I, I agree with the comments about wanting to, you know, streamline things and make it easier. And, and we have a very, very competent staff and I don't have any concerns there. But I think what I want to remind my colleagues is when things are done only at the staff level, there is no opportunity for the public to weigh in. And so I know we're going to talk about some of those things coming up here, but I, I think it's a balance that we have to strike here, you know, by what's reasonable to be done at the staff level. And of course, the state continues to dictate that more and more be done at the staff level. But just remember that every time you do that, you take away the public's ability to weigh in on a project.
You know what I've seen? So I, I'm going to go back to, I think it was Mike that made a comment about, you know, you have land and you're able to do so much. I think sending it to the planning, an example, sending it to the planning commission only for them to say yes to me is, it, it bottlenecks, it creates inefficiencies. It's expensive for the, the customers, expensive on our end. And so I, I would rather not bottleneck projects if the answer is ultimately going to be a yes. Does that make sense? Because there were times I was, when I was on the Historic District Commission, there were things that came up that I remember thinking, you know, it's so, it, it, it felt like it was a waste of time when the answer was going to ultimately be yes. And so I, 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 that's what I would like to see get improved, is that waste of time or having to go, having to go somewhere where the, where we already know the answer.
But there's, there's, the other side of that coin is that there's been long ugly situations where the answer was no for what seems like minor reasons. And those are the kinds of things that could be handled by giving a little bit more control to the staff on minor modifications.
Oh, I support that. I completely support that. I don't, I, I'm, I, I'm, I would like to see inefficiency and this is one of them, so yes.
Yeah. I respect, you know, Councilwoman Aquino's point. I was recently talking to a couple of businesses and this is what their direct statements are. Before we get the, you know, again, what we are trying to do is here, so a little bit quicker, but a little bit cheaper. That's the, you know, end results it is going to be. And those two business people said, YK, before we start the business in Folsom, we broke. Because sometimes it is taking too long for, because no threshold it is. So it is good reason, and they are comparing with other cities too. Other cities, we don't have to say this long or this much expensive and this many rounds. For a good reason, again, that's what you are trying to bring. I just want to add that comment. This happened last week.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, that's got a little format, got a little bit tweaked. But on the question of hearings, notices and outreach, should the city increase outreach and noticing, especially for large projects? As Councilmember Aquino noted, you know, the state is, is, you know, taking away discretion in a number of areas. But that doesn't, you know, preclude us necessarily from, you know, making folks aware of what's going on. So I wanted to go over our current process and talk about some of the best practices and then discuss staff's recommendations. So currently, under our, our process, we do send out a request for comments email within a couple of weeks after we've received an application. In the case of large projects or controversial projects, we do encourage the applicant to meet with the neighbors or neighborhood associations, that type of thing. If there's a public hearing involved, notices are mailed to property owners with 300 feet of the site. And then we have an advertisement placed or a notice placed in the newspaper 10 days beforehand. For design review projects, we do post the site. And then for major projects and design review projects, so it's not all projects, but major projects and design review projects, those are posted on, on the community developments webpages that we have dedicated for, for those two development types. In terms of the noticing distance, what we've seen is that most jurisdictions are moving away from the, the state mandated 300 feet and have been increasing that range in an effort to encourage, you know, transparency. And in fact, some jurisdictions, mainly Elk Grove and Rockland, have increased it even beyond that in certain situations. So what we've seen kind of around the region is that there's things like early notification emails, early site posting, there are director reports explaining the decisions of the staff to the, the planning commission at planning commission hearings. They've expanded their, their public hearing noticing area like I've talked about. There are public notices to both property owners and tenants. They've set up more sophisticated development activity websites so you can see exactly what's going on in, in an area of interest or in your neighborhood. And then in some cases, they've actually given the community development director the discretion to acquire a community meeting if he or she thinks that that's appropriate for that project. So based on our, our review, we, we are recommending that we improve our outreach and increase the level of transparency and fold that into the new zoning code. We're going to continue to, to do the early notification and the request for comments emails. We will be providing, we're recommending that we provide expanded director reports to the planning commission with, where, where the commission members can hear what's happened at the director level and the public can hear what's happened at the director level. And they can be referred to a website with all of the, the details on that. We recommend expanding our noticing area to 500 feet, setting up a development activity webpage where they can monitor all of the projects that are, that are going on. And then we would continue to encourage community meetings for large projects. We, we are recommending that the, that the council grant the community development director the discretion to mandate that if they see the developers not being proactive and they know this is a large and controversial project. So any thoughts or discussions on, on that topic?
I like all of these.
I, I think this is an excellent list to increase transparency. Even the 300 to 500 feet is, it's a great recommendation.
300 feet is within a football field and that's not far enough. Yeah, I, I agree with all of it.
Yeah. Only thing, number four, I'm not sure what exactly that means. I know a couple of times we talked, Pam, on the tracket and the, you know, a pin going around the minute the applicant puts the request with the different colors. My only thing not knowing, unless I can wait, you can tell what exactly that expanded means.
Well, we're looking into some options with software that can connect to our new system and make this pretty streamlined. So we'll work with city manager and get back to you, but we hope that that can be done in the near term.
Right. So in addition, what I was thinking, like, you know, we get every Monday e-newsletters for, what, 18,000 e-newsletters or so, once in a month periodically, you know, posting a link for residents, what's going on around Folsom, a link, simple letters, you know, that's what I think proactive, that can definitely cover the beyond 500 feet. I mean, most of them uses the nowadays technology, of course. Few people don't, that's okay, at least we can cover more.
No, but the 500 feet has to do with people that, that actually live near the project.
Yeah, I agree.
That have probably never been to the city's website, so.
Yeah.
What constitutes early notification?
Generally, it's within, the standard that we've seen out there is generally within about two weeks. Obviously, if we get a very.
Two weeks of what?
Of receipt of a complete application.
Gotcha.
So if, if we don't have enough information to, to, to begin the review and to circulate it, we're not, we're, you know, we're going to wait until we've got a, a complete application and move it forward.
So you have a complete application and then you're saying, putting information out and asking for comments within two weeks. But is that, all of that application material that's under review posted publicly? Or is it just, hey, somebody has applied to put a McDonald's over here, come tell us all the reasons why you hate that idea?
No, we, we generally provide the, the, the information that's been provided to us, a site plan, elevations, those types of things. We, we don't just ask for people's opinion on, you know, just.
Well, you're still asking the same question. Tell us all the reasons you hate this.
We are, but with more information. Yeah.
And then I, I, I do like the idea to continue to encourage community meetings for large projects, but demanding it of a developer, I think they take their own risk if they choose to not do that stuff.
Yeah.
I, I don't think demanding it is our place.
I actually do. If it's a big enough project, I think they, they have to have a meeting. So that's actually one of the things I like best about that, that and the 500 feet.
Yeah.
And Sarah, you said you're good at this?
Yeah. Number four, I think that's, again, I just want to reiterate, you know, including that in e-newsletter with some attractive words. That way we can steer people to the electronic things.
That's the idea.
Yeah. So on the appeals process, one of the questions, a couple of the questions that we have before you is, should the city continue with the, the two levels of appeal that we have now? And then if we want to switch to a one-level appeal process, which I'll explain in a bit, would you want the planning commission or the city council to be the, the final appeal body for director-level decisions?
I, I can tell you, I want two levels.
Yes.
So I'm kind of moot on the second, on the second bullet item.
I agree.
So let me just, if I could explain kind of the thinking behind this. So right now, director-level decisions are appealed to the planning commission. And then, and then the planning commission's decision on that is appealed to this, to the city council and the city council makes the final decision. Generally, more of the cities in our region are trending toward the, the one level of appeal process. I think kind of for two reasons. One, they're not seeing big differences between their city council's decision and their planning commission's decision. And they're looking, again, at streamlining the process both for the applicant and the appellant, as well as for staff, so that the process doesn't drag on for, you know, months at a time. The reason that we are putting this out there is generally because we've seen so few director-level appeals. And again, these are not major projects. These are small projects. I think we've seen the last 10 years about five. They tend to be issues over the design of custom homes and sometimes disputes involving neighbors. Generally, the bigger projects, those are going to the planning commission anyway. The city council is the final hearing body on, on those. So the question is, for really small projects, do we want to continue to have two levels of, of appeal?
I do. Anybody else?
I, I go with one-level appeal based on the number of, you know, if anything is not agreed, the decision of director, planning commission can handle it smaller. And if any big planning commission decision is not right, they can come to this body. Still, it is one level.
Thank you. Rosario?
I think because there have been so few, I would support the two-level appeal.
Mike?
Okay, I'm going to, again, lead with a question. And I, I know that we are handling the historic districts separately. But the, the thing that was uncovered about the zoning code being effectively silent on crematoriums, right? If an instance like that were to come up in some other part of the city, is there a director-level approval for things that, where the code is silent? And then the appeal on that would only be to the planning commission?
It wouldn't be on things that are silent. We would specifically identify what could be approved at the director level. If it's not.
Something we haven't contemplated yet, is all I'm saying. If, if it literally is silent, so hypothetical, you know, balloon racing yacht-landing place or something like that. And our code is completely silent on where you can land air yachts. The, if it's a new use that sort of fits a commercial area and roughly looks like an airport, is that ever going to be something that, that the director could approve directly?
The director can make a similar use determination, but the project would likely still require some other level of review for a new structure or a use permit or something like that that would likely be a planning commission level. So a bigger project. If it were a change in use or something, there could be a similar use determination with no exterior modifications. You know, there could be a scenario like that.
Well, we were cautioned to look to the future. So I just was trying to think of a hypothetical situation where we might create a puzzle for ourselves.
And the zoning code update, so hopefully that won't be as problematic.
Okay, so balloon landing areas, put that in there.
The other provision that we're contemplating, putting in the zoning code, is the ability of the community development director to elevate a project to the commission level rather than handle it at the director level in that kind of a situation where, you know, it's a project that doesn't quite fit any of these categories, there's a level of discomfort associated with it, and we would want the, the director would likely want the planning commission to weigh in.
Thank you. I'm fine with the one-level appeal as described.
I, I will weigh in here. I would be fine with the one-level appeal, but because I think there is support to, you know, make some of these changes where things happen at the director level, again, I just think it's really important that we give the public an opportunity to weigh in on some of these more controversial things. So to me, I'm going to err on keeping the two level just to add that ability for the public to weigh in.
Okay.
So, so this lays out the, the recommendations. If there's any other comments on, on this, Councilmember Aquino, you've weighed in on all of these.
So I think you wanted to change two to like 25%, right? And then? Were there, I think the.
I think everybody was good on three. I think three of us wanted to, to leave it at two for number four. And I wanted five units or less on number one, but I don't know that three of us agreed. Oh, you didn't actually weigh in on that one?
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm, again, it's just kind of a trade-off in trying to find that balance between streamlining things and also letting the public have their say. But actually, I'd like to hear from the public on this one. I'm assuming we have some people sign up to speak, do we?
And just to address the, the issue that you raised, Councilmember Aquino, our current director-level design review hearings are hearings. So it, we, we do do the site posting and folks can call in with respect to the, to the project. You know, we are contemplating, looking at noticing neighbors as well in addition to the site posting.
That happened in my neighborhood, and I never got the opportunity to comment, and I have a disaster of a home in my cul-de-sac because of that, so.
Well, I'm unfamiliar with this, Desmond, so, when you say director level, it isn't just you reviewing something in your office and saying yes or no, it's more of a process than that?
Yeah, for design review at the administrative level now, yes, and we would probably have two different types of review decisions depending on the project type. So, there may be some where we go the same kind of optional hearing route, where if anyone requests the hearing or provides comments, that's considered, and we have a formal date of decision versus decisions that are made as a matter of course in the review of a project. So, I think there would be two different types of director reviews, not all of them would have the hearing. But we'll lay that out in the zoning code update.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear from the public, but I'm open to one level for the appeal process, but let's hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay, so we do have, we do have one request to speak, Loretta?
Loretta Hettinger, again, I'm putting on my long-range planner hat, and I like most of what I'm hearing tonight. I really think that there are ways to make Commissioner, Councilmember Aquino's comments folded into this, as well as your wish to, Councilmember, oh, I can't speak tonight, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Rodriguez.
Yes, anyway, all right, I'll go back to this. Okay, Folsom has a reputation for upholding high standards, and part of the reason that people are willing to go along with high standards is that they see that Folsom is paying attention to the details, and that is one of the values of having multiple levels of review, but I agree that it needs to be streamlined, and the state is pushing us into some of that streamlining. So, what I would say about objective standards in general is that they are valuable, but the objective standards and the director-level review, all of that depends on the level of knowledge of the staff members who are making that decision, and it's difficult for them to do that in isolation. It's really important to cultivate the relationship between the staff and the commissions, and I was really happy to hear that you supported that entire notification screen, because the lack of that kind of communication has caused problems in the historic district, and I'm not gonna embarrass anybody by calling out names of, or places, but the lack of communication has been a problem.
Loretta, do you wanna tell us where you are on these four items?
I would encourage you not to get married to a certain number without hearing from the commissions and the public. I think your advice to the staff now would be best if you said, "general," in the vicinity of this kind of number, rather than saying five units, or rather than saying ten percent, or rather than saying twenty-five percent. And I think it is important to have a way to prevent that ten percent, or whatever the number ends up being, from becoming a de facto new standard. Just because you go in and say, "I have a problem, I need a ten percent review change in this," doesn't mean that you ought to automatically be given it, and I really like the idea that was floated about the director being able to just say, "No, I won't answer this."
That's basically what we're talking about, we're just-
Yes.
We're talking about the point at which it doesn't necessarily have, it doesn't mean that, Pam, or whoever's sitting in that chair, is gonna automatically approve it, it's just that it doesn't go to the planning commission.
Well, the thing with-
Doesn't have to go to the planning commission.
The principle of objective standards is that if it meets those objective standards, then that's a ministerial decision that the staff must say yes. That is the issue that I am worried about, and that's what I would want Pam to be able to have the discretion to say, you know, "Based on my experience, based on my training as a planner, based on my knowledge of the attitudes of the planning commission and the city council here, I'm not gonna make this call, you're gonna have to take this one to the planning commission." So, that is the kind of thing that we have run into in the historic district. Granted, the historic district has exceptions to everything, but it's also a good place to learn about what can go wrong in a process. So, the idea of making it more transparent for the public is a great, great idea, because Folsom citizens care. That's one of our great characteristics, is that Folsom citizens care about what goes on in their community. And right now, it's very difficult for people who don't have a hobby, like some of us do, of clicking through all those multiple screens to finally get to the point where you see that there are some projects being proposed in Folsom. It's, the average person who goes to the website is probably not going to click up on that little yellow menu corner and then look through all of the departments and say, "Oh, let me see what the community development department is doing."
I think there's about five people in the city of Folsom that do that, and you should probably all meet for coffee.
Yes, and my point is, there are probably more people than that that want to know.
Okay.
And-
Can you email them all for me?
I probably already do, and I like the idea, I don't know that it was stated, of posting the property for every application that is coming in. I don't see that people wouldn't care about more than just design review, and might not be the ones who would be within five hundred feet getting a notice, or who happen to read it in the telegraph for the bee, but they might drive, be driving by the property and say, "Oh, my gosh, look what's happening there," especially, you know, if it's a business that other businesses might want to weigh in on.
Okay.
So, basically, I think it's great to do more notification, and I really appreciate that staff is going to reach out to the public and to the commissions before they bring you something final. So, that's why I would urge you to do things that are generalized, rather than the staff having to go to the planning commission and say, "Well, the city council has directed us that it needs to be ten percent," or five units, or ten units. Just say generally what you want them to do.
Okay, thanks, Loretta.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And Loretta, can I just say, I wanna thank you for caring. You really do care, and it's evident.
Unfortunately, it's both a blessing and a curse to care. Okay, good night.
Thank you. Okay, comments, questions?
Now, our recommendation to staff, right, that's what it is? You're back. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I think I've got the information that we need, I appreciate your time on this. I just wanted to walk you through kind of the next steps I touched on this. So, we're gonna fold the information that you've provided to us into the draft administrative articles, we'll get the rest of the zoning code done, then there'll be a thirty-day public review, we'll have it available on the website, and during that time, we'll be holding workshops with the commission, the council, and with the community, and then we'll make revisions based on the feedback that we receive during that time, and then present the final draft of the zoning code for your consideration and adoption in the summer, and then we will launch into the historic district effort on the zoning for that area. Any additional questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may just clarify, has the council given staff direction with respect to the levels of appeal? What is the council's direction to staff?
Okay, just true view, Rosario, I believe is at two.
Two.
Where are you, YK? One or two?
I think you said one.
Oh, one.
Okay, I'm at two. Mike, you're one?
I can really go either way.
We are ultimately-
I mean, they're only five-ish, it's very few.
Yeah. I made it real, so.
I'll go with one.
Yeah, so, there you go.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, Desmond, I think, page, slide thirty, ah, thank you so much, I wish you could have started with that. Yeah, seriously, otherwise, you know, you are taking our preliminary input and going through the process and coming back. Thank you, and we gave our inputs. I didn't know that, and how this is going to be, even though you are trying to explain, thank you.
Yeah, my apologies, next time, I'll walk you through the process at the beginning, and then wait till the end.
Exactly, right, that's why I was consistently asking, why it didn't go to planning commission, why it didn't, right, that's what my consistent question was to you, and why, I mean, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Desmond, you are always very thorough and very prepared, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
And also, I think I was making this week's my experience with the two business people, that's evident, you know, here, and thank you for giving the other cities, when they said other cities was reasonably quicker, now I know why. Thank you.
Okay, so, we will move on to the joint city council, Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, south of fifty parking meeting. Mr. Clark will call the roll.
Some members, Rodriguez-
Here.
Aquino-
Here.
Chalum Chirla-
Here.
Kozlowski-
Here.
And Howell.
Here. We have two items on the consent calendar.
I'll move items sixteen and seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Some members, Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
Chalum Chirla-
Yes.
Kozlowski-
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. So, we will adjourn the joint city council agenda and reconvene the city council meeting and move on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. If you've not yet had the chance to pick up a free kitchen pail and begin collecting organic waste, you are encouraged to attend one of the upcoming kitchen pail giveaway events. Please join us on Tuesday, October fourth, from one to five, at the Folsom Public Library to pick up your pail, or on Saturday, October fifteenth, from eight AM to one PM at the historic Folsom Farmers Market, and future events with pail giveaway will be found on our website at folsom.ca.us/organics. Folsom Parks and Recreation's Fun Factory Preschool has a limited number of openings in the classes for four-year-olds, classes held from nine AM to noon, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and classrooms are located right next door in the Folsom Community Center and also over at the sports complex. Learn more about the program and find answers to frequently asked questions online, you can also call 916-461-6612. Vista del Lago High School students will celebrate the annual homecoming parade on Wednesday, September twenty-first. Motorist or advisor golf links drive between Empire Oaks Elementary School and Vista del Lago will be closed from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM to accommodate the parade. And finally, Thousands will honor local veterans at the annual Wayne Spence Folsom Veterans Day Parade on Friday, November eleventh. The city of Folsom is accepting parade entries through Friday, October twenty-eighth, and you can find entry forms on our website, or also by calling 916-461-6615. Thank you, Mayor.
Rosario?
I wanna thank the two thousand volunteers that are participating in this Saturday's Community Service Day, it is truly one of the best days of the year here in Folsom. For all you country lovers, Americana Fest is happening this Friday and Saturday, and I believe it's in the historic district this time. And to anyone that has gone through the Choose Folsom Leadership Course, there's a reunion on Tuesday, September twentieth, at five-thirty at the University of Beer on, which is a new business on East Bidwell. Future Folsom is happening, I think, oh, gosh, next Thursday, I think, next Thursday. This is a great event for those that are interested in the economic future of our region from industry standards. And then, there's a Wild West Film Festival taking place on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, and Sunday the twenty-fifth, and I believe that is also happening in the historic district. That's it.
Last week, I was at Long Beach, attending the League of California Cities, it's a fun event, and good to see my colleagues, colleagues, city manager was there, and now we got newly-elected president for the all-state cities, Ali Sajid Thaj. I know him for last decade, so, now we know the president from Folsom, right, you know, at least, you know, I have his ears, so we can definitely bring, I already brought two items in front of him, for sure, and one is, just now, we talked about the organic green waste one, and I got some alliance from few cities, they said, "Yeah, why are we picking garbage every week? Let's see whether we can move that one through the legislation process, at least to start with the cities." After, we are moving all the organic waste from garbage to green waste, now garbage is kind of a candidate for pickup every two weeks, rather than every week. That will definitely bring the burden cost down for the residents, and also, we are talking about the greenhouse gas emission, twenty-five percent of the trucks are going to be off-road, we don't have to use that one. At least, I preached to him, he got it, he got it, and he said, "Let's talk about it." And also, I spoke to the regional SAC Valley Division person, and he is going to put us in touch with the lobbyist who agreed for this one at first place, why we can't revisit the state decision. So, that's a big one, you know, at least I was able to spend some good time talking to all the other city leaders, you know, it's wonderful, it was my first full conference attending, I enjoyed it. And the second one is, we all talked about the Community Service Day of Folsom, we all are going to see almost hundred projects, and we will definitely do, you know, incredible work for the city of Folsom. And also, as a part of my visits to the community, recently, I visited last week, no, not last week, early this week, this weekend, Pine Brook Village on Folsom Auburn Way, there are about three hundred-plus kind of mobile homes, and we talked about some of the-
No, 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 no.
Manufactured homes.
Niva Simeroli is gonna send a lightning bolt directly to your seat, those are called manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes, okay, well, I can agree my mistake publicly, that way I don't get that one, okay? Manufactured homes. They are very passionate people, I met with the president and secretary, and I talked about some of the programs we have, CAPS volunteers, they're seasoned people, you know what, quite a few people showed interest, how do we sign up for that one? Because, one, they want to start their neighborhood watch program for their neighborhood, and I talked about the CAPS program.
They already have a neighborhood watch program over there.
Well, these are the words from the president and secretary, I don't know, so, these words from the presidents and secretary, they want to start the neighborhood watch, whether they are a new president and secretary, I can't comment on that one. Anyway, and also, we talked about that senior helping program we have for, you know, underprivileged or the income levels, and some of them said, "You know what, we definitely take advantage of those programs." So, those are the ones, you know, doing with the community, otherwise, things are good. About my cable commission, we hired a new executive director, and they are starting from today, yeah, for the Sacramento Cable Commission, and that's it. Again, Folsom, see you on Saturday at Lakeside Church, thank you.
Mike?
No news from SACOG right at the moment, so, we're kind of still in our summer doldrums out there. I also am extremely excited about Community Service Day, and I'm gonna try and help out on a bunch of different projects, so catch me all over the place. And speaking of doing the senior projects, I actually got to do that one year, I spent the whole day at Pine Brook, fixing fences, fixing fences and stuff, it was great fun. And then, the only other thing I was gonna suggest is that you guys should reward yourself- yourself with a delicious German-style cold beer at Red Bus Brewing this Friday or Saturday. I will be there at about 6:00 on Friday to tap the first keg of Oktoberfest. Please join me for our one and only local brewery right now. Thank you.
Sarah?
I just have one item. I think most of us met Folsom resident Reed Bellis and went and visited his home. He lives in a cul-de-sac in Briggs Ranch. He, if you remember, created a very, what I thought was clever and quaint barber shop just inside of his garage, which kind of jump-started a conversation in the city about our home occupation ordinance. And although those conversations are ongoing, Reed had to stop and close his barber shop last year because he was diagnosed with ALS, Lou Gehrig's disease, and he actually passed away a couple weeks ago, leaving behind his wife Lynn and three adult children. So I would just ask that we adjourn in memory of Reed Bellis.
Absolutely. I was not aware of that, and Reed was a good friend and customer of the restaurant. And I've been worried about him, so I'm very, very sorry to hear that. Sorry for his family. Regional SAN is tomorrow. Nothing overly exciting going on, except we're still moving toward separating regional SAN from Sacramento County. Things are well at RT. Had a conversation with Mr. Rackavan earlier today about some stuff with the railroad that we're going to try to hopefully get worked out later on this week, Thursday morning. Looking forward to seeing everyone at Community Service Day, bright and early. I think we're supposed to be there at 7:30. And I remember, I just remember how cold it was last year in the morning.
After a hot snow.
Oh, we were all out there shivering, if I remember correctly. So hopefully, it won't be too hot and it won't be too cold. Golf tournament is a week from this Friday, so hopefully, I'll see many of you there. And we are adjourned in memory of Reed Bellis at 9:04.